Call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission Order. Just ask you to silence your cell phones or pagers. There's speaker request forms in the back of the room along with agendas for today's agenda for the county commission. And we'll begin with the moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner La Croix.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Roskinak, I presume you can hear us okay?
Morning. Yes, I can hear you fine.
Thank you.
He sure looks festive.
Yeah. Okay, review and approve agenda.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Recognition of the new employees. I had a good turnout this morning of recently hired employees in Pennington County. I want to thank them for joining our team. And we had lots of different departments represented this morning, so appreciate that.
Commissioner, or Chair?
Commissioner Adcock.
Just a couple of words. I'd like to thank the employees and the department heads for a year of some amazing stuff that we accomplished this year. I was just talking with Ms. Hawley and just saying who the backbone of this county was, and it was our department heads with our employees that have made the difference for our county to move ahead and just do some amazing work. So, thank you all for what you've done for Pennington County. Couldn't do it without you, and we appreciate you very much. Like I said, if I could have 17 people and those people work as hard as you do for me and my other businesses, I would be very thankful. So, can't say enough about the department heads and employees that worked for us. Again, started on compensation with some department heads and just getting to know people and the department heads even more from that and how much they care about their employees and how they fight for those employees no matter how much that takes. So, I don't know if the employees know that, but they do. They fight for you in anything that has to do with the employees. So, thank you, department heads, for, I don't always agree with you on everything, but in the long run, we find some really good solution of how to make people feel welcome and feel like they mean something to us in Pennington County. So, thank you again, department heads and employees.
Very good.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Hawley, Hennings.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and hold of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of December 6, 2022. Number seven is to reappoint Mr. John Gload as the county constable for a two-year term for Legislative District Number 33. Number eight is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Patty Bruner, Matthew Oden, Heather Shambless, and John James to the 2023 Extension Advisory Board. Number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of November 2022. And number 10 is to declare a surplus for the purpose of disposal outdated and non-functional clothes washer, asset number 5380, and dryer as submitted by the sheriff's office. And Mr. Chair, at this time, we have a request by Mr. Chad Ellsworth to pull the minutes from the consent calendar.
Okay. I just want to recognize John Gload. John, thank you for your service. Thanks for being willing to continue to serve. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mm-hmm. I didn't see any members of the extension group here. Did I miss them?
No, they will be at the next meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I also, since we're not going to pull number seven, I also like to thank John. He comes and helps us and takes care of the things we need, not only for the county, but for some of the work that we do. So, thank you, John. You work very hard. So, thank you for saying that. Gary.
Any other member of the public that choose to have any items from the consent agenda removed for consideration? Any members of the commission wanting anything removed? Seeing none, I take a motion to approve items 7, 8, 9, 10.
So, move.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, Chad Ellsworth.
Chad Ellsworth. I'm asking to pull number six and set a special session so it can be discussed with public comment. The specific part of number six is item 16, the proposed letter to the governor concerning election items. The letter is patently deceptive and in contempt of the public. There were false statements involved on the ES and S machines, and Tripp County's election seems to be interfered with. So, we got, in my opinion, official election misconduct, and these things should be set forth in a special meeting where everybody has something to say about it. Any alternative, I can think of no other thing but setting for some sort of a January 6 committee that the public can participate in to find out what was happening with that letter. And the meetings that were held that led to the letter. I'm anticipating, if you guys don't agree with this, I'm anticipating taking something over to the sheriff and seeing what we can do for the public sometime in January.
Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Adcock.
I move approval of number six, please.
Got a motion to approve item number six. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is the items from the Compensation Committee. Carol Bancroft. Morning, Carol.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So, the Compensation Committee requests board approval of the revisions to policy 3.18, which is the Compensation Administration, as presented in the December 6, 2022 Commissioner Meeting. And the motion could read that I move to approve the recommended revisions by the Compensation Committee to policy 3.18, Compensation Administration. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Adcock, you serve on that, on the compensation?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything there that, in addition, that we should be aware of?
Actually, I helped move this forward. So, I believe the department heads, like I said, it gives them more leeway to be able to hire and move forward without coming to the board every two weeks. So, I am in favor of this moving forward on the 3.18 revisions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Now, is there any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Holidays policy.
So, the Compensation Committee requests board approval of the revisions to policy 4.2, which is holidays, as presented in the December 6, 2022 Commissioners Meeting. And the motion could read, I move to approve the recommended revisions by the Compensation Committee to policy 4.2, holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions, Carol, on this?
Move approval.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Items from the auditorium. Cindy.
A little bit early for the 9:15 here.
Oh, okay. Well, so let us take a look at hearing from the sheriff first. We'll skip over that one. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning. You got the sheriff in, the sheriff-elect does that.
Vice Sheriff.
Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. It's my last meeting as sheriff, so I asked the chair if I could just do a thank you. Brian's going to speak to the agenda item we have, but I appreciate your dedication and commitment to Pennington County, both the employees and the citizens. And I don't think people fully appreciate the weight of the decisions you all have to make every meeting. And I've watched you for the last 12 years here. Some of you have a lot of history well beyond that. Gary, going back to my days up here, and Lloyd and Deb, I'm the city council, so we have a lot of history and watched over the years and appreciate how you have served. And I just want to thank you for me personally and the support you've offered to the sheriff's office and, again, the work you do for the county. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And obviously, we appreciate the work that you've done over the past 12 years as the county sheriff, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Tone.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Enjoy retirement.
Brian.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff-elect for one more meeting. This is a little bit of a unique situation for us in that we're generally able to get all of our holiday hours used for our employees, but due to the staffing shortages we had at the jail this year, we have about 12 employees that, as of last week, we're carrying a balance of about 170.75 hours of holiday hours. We're still actively working to try to find gaps in our schedule that will allow us to get them off, but right now, if we're offering any more time off or if we were to try to get rid of these holiday hours, they'd be forced overtime for other employees, and we've been doing quite a bit of that lately, so we're trying to avoid it. By policy, we really have two options. We can let these hours just drop off and the employees lose them, which I don't want to do in the situation that they're in, or we can roll them over, department head discretion. We can roll those hours over into 2023. But with being short-staffed like we are, that's just going to compound the issue for us moving into the new year. So, we've talked to all of these employees. They've all used enough vacation in the last six months that if we just convert these holiday hours back under their vacation bank to replace that vacation they use, none of them will be losing vacation on top of that. So, I'd request a motion to take the remaining holiday balance for 12 employees that we have at the jail and put that back on their vacation banks at the end of the year.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So, if we do that, are we going to put ourselves in a pickle with maybe some of their vacation time getting close to be in, have to be use or lose as well? Or is that, is there a carryover for that? You understand what I'm getting at?
And I did go, I had our accountants go and take a look at that, and none of them are in jeopardy of being to lose vacation.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'd have requested that we just paid them out.
Okay. And then the other question I have, Mr. Chairman, so the 170 hours, is that total between all of them? They don't all carry 170 on average each. It's just 170 for all 12?
All 12. And it should be a fair amount less than that by the end of the year because, like I said, we're trying to find gaps where we're able to get them off. Some of them have as little as 1.5 hours on the bank still, and some of them have as much as a little bit over 20 hours still on the bank. So, in between there for those 12 employees.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Brian, I appreciate you doing, being creative with this because, you know, with the 24/7 operation, working holidays, you know, those are pretty tough situations and especially being understaffed. And so, I think a lot of people don't really understand or get the gist of having to work holidays, you know? So, I think it's a way to help our employees that do do that because they're giving up the time from their families and so forth. So, I think it's pretty creative, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Adcock.
Thank you, Brian, for looking up those hours. I called Brian yesterday just, in full disclosure, to look up the hours, how many, basically, how much time or hours that was, and that makes a difference. And then you did answer the question on the payout that I was going to ask. Someone had said something about the payout on it, and you tell me again why we wouldn't just do a payout on that for vacation time?
Well, we could, but after visiting with the employees, I'd prefer to put the hours back on their bank so when our staffing level rebounds, they're able to take some time off.
So, Brian, have you rebounded in the last two years where you've been having, I mean, was it just this year that you're having these issues or has it been since COVID? Or is it because of hiring right now is just hard to hire or?
Well, right now specifically, I mean, turnover at the jail has been historically high, but this last year has been very challenging for us. So, we are, over the next couple of months, our outlook is getting much better. We're getting more people to show up to testing. We had a really successful testing just last night. So, I anticipate over the next couple of months, our numbers will be rebounding, and hopefully, 2023 is going to look a lot better for us than 2022 did for jail staffing.
Okay, that was my question because if you have 170 now, what's going to be next year if it keeps adding up or you keep having the same issues for, and it's not just the sheriff's department, it's many of the departments that are having some of these hiring issues. So, just making sure that if we do this, we might have to find a different solution if it keeps happening this way because you have some dedicated employees that are, like you said, doing overtime and everything, so you want to make sure we're taking care of them as well because that will burn them out, and you already know that. So, anything we could do to make that difference, and if this is, to me, going to make the difference, then I'm willing to move forward with it on how we're doing this today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move to authorize the jail correctional employees who have unused holiday hours remaining in 2022 to replace previously used vacation hours with unused holiday hours.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Now, Cindy, we'll revert back to item number 12, Public Hearing and Budget Supplement, SP 22-016.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Yes, we have Budget Supplement 22-016, and the first one on here is for the insurance. Our property insurance renewal came up higher than what was budgeted for, so that is the first one on there. The second one is from non-spendable fund balance. That's just a bookkeeping thing. It's an amount that we had to carry as non-spendable funds from our South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance, and now they're saying we don't have to carry that on the balance sheet. So, that allows me to remove that from there. And then the other one is the supplement to the accumulated building fund for the purchase of our 900 concourse. Would ask for approval of that resolution.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Item 14, items from the state's attorney, Laura Retsel.
Good morning, Laura Retsel, Interim State's Attorney. So, our Director of Victims Assistance, Mike McCormick, left a couple of months ago. He was fantastic. That was a real loss for us, and we began hunting for a new Director of Victims Assistance. We were lucky enough to find Alexandra Sterling. Alexandra comes to us from Behavior Management Systems where she had been for five years. She has a master's degree in social work. I'm hoping today that you will appoint her as Pennington County's Director of Victims Assistance. There's actually statute 23A, 28C7 that provides that you can appoint with the concurrence of either myself or the sheriff, a victim or witness assistant to assist victims of crimes by resolution. And our county, victims are important to us, all of us, the commission and the state's attorney's office, and we're hoping that you will allow her to lead our Department of Victims Assistance into its next stages, taking advocacy for victims to a new level. We propose a resolution for you and will stand for questions.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I'm in agreement with this decision of hiring Ms. Sterling. I've watched Ms. Retsel in the last few months do a wonderful job with her employees and just bring the team together in the state's attorney's office. So, I trust that she vetted this process in a way that we can trust that she's hired the right person. So, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay.
So, I'll move approval.
Thank you.
I've got a motion to approve and a second. Alexandra, are you, you're brand new to the state's attorney's office?
Are you scared yet?
No, not scared, but very excited.
Okay, super. Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Alexandra, I'd like to welcome you aboard, too. The job that you're going to be doing is a tough one, but it's also a very important one that requires a lot of compassion and diligence and so forth, and I'm sure you're doing well. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Retsel for her work. This last year, I've had the opportunities to get to know you a little more outside of the building, and I really appreciate your diligence and your passion for your work also. I mean, when we're always just talking business, you see one side of a person, but I've got to see on a personal level, and I've seen your passion for your work, and I really appreciate it. So, I thank you guys both for your work in the state's attorney's office.
Is there any public comment in regard to this? Not seeing any. Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, Ted.
Ted?
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Ruffle, Deputy Director, Pennington County, 901. Merry Christmas to you all, by the way. What we have before you today, a little bit unusual. This is the South Dakota Bureau of Information and Technology has approached us after we finished the recent construction project of the three new public safety radio towers. And they, we've had, we have a long working relationship with them, and it's very beneficial to the county. And they asked us if we would work with them to develop a JPA, a Joint Powers Agreement, that would memorialize the various agreements we unofficially had in place with them for many years for the purpose of not only memorializing for ourselves exactly who pays what, but they'd like to use this JPA as a template as they go forward to other counties and cities that they cooperate with to have the same type of memorialization in place elsewhere. And so, Jay Alderman and I worked with their attorney, and that's where this JPA came from. And I put together a couple of numbers for you just so you have some idea. Since 2012, when we built our first tower here in Pennington County, there's been about $7.5 million spent on construction and equipment, and the result of that has been about a 50-50 split. So, the state has paid about half of that, and we've paid about half of that. And the nice thing about this JPA is really the most important or the most expensive part of those towers is that equipment that goes inside. And the BIT has always wanted to be and wants to continue to be responsible for that equipment, not only financially but operationally. It's a very integrated system statewide, and they want to be responsible for that equipment, purchasing it, maintaining it. So, that's very advantageous to us. And then the other expensive part of those towers, of course, the utilities and especially the fiber connections. And so, with this agreement, we're splitting those costs annually about 2/3, 1/3. So, there's a huge benefit, public safety-wise, to having those towers here for our responders, but there's also a big benefit to state and other people. And so, that's why they are willing to split those costs, and they're great partners. So, that's the brief description of this JPA, and we would appreciate it if you would approve the JPA. The commissioner of the BIT has already signed it, and we're hoping you'll approve it, and Commissioner Drews can sign it today as well, and I'll stand for any questions.
So, Ted, was this done pretty well statewide at this point in time? Is this new technology?
Well, the towers, there's about 55 towers across the state, but Pennington County has been the only county that's really partnered in a meaningful way and built our own towers that we own to make part of the statewide system. Of course, there's a lot of counties that are looking at us saying, well, why do they have such good radio coverage? Well, because we've worked hard to partner with the state to build that system out, and the sheriff, Sheriff Tone, played a huge role in that, especially in Mount Rushmore area, Hill City. So, you know, getting the legislature involved and getting that money committed was important, and the sheriff played a huge role in that. So, I know Sioux Falls is looking at building more towers, and they want to improve coverage in their area, and that's why BIT wants to have this in place so that when they're approached by cities and counties, they can say, you bet. Here's how we typically do it in Pennington County and in other places.
So, the towers, the three new towers that we had, that we have, I mean, they were in addition to what was already existing at that point in time?
Correct. There were a couple of other, there was a tower, there's two towers here in Rapid City that we built in 2012 and 2013.
Okay.
And then we added these three towers and...
So, it didn't take any out of service that were?
No, no. We've added to the system to improve coverage here.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted. Merry Christmas.
Good morning, Shannon. Item 16.
You're having a good day, Shannon.
What? I'm not going to screw anything up. This is really simple.
I didn't say you were going to screw it up. I just got to tease you because you're funny to tease.
A trailer house left. We didn't know about it. It moved to Fall River County, and we're taking it off the tax roll. As you can see from the note, one year was deemed uncollectible by the sheriff's office. So, this is really pretty simple, but then I wanted to add a comment that when we find stuff like this that happens, mobile homes move, houses burn, stuff like that happens, an exempt entity like the city or a county acquires a property and then it goes off the tax roll, that's the reason for all of these abatements. And in January and February, you're going to get a bunch of them. You always do. I always say something ahead of time about it because we can't abate a tax bill that doesn't exist. So, there is a mobile home out there that moved or burned or something like that, and I am just waiting until the tax bill actually exists to bring the abatement before you, and you'll see a bunch of these. We'll do 20 or 30 of them in January and February.
Okay. Any questions, Shannon?
Good job.
Mr. Chair.
Be nice to him.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move to approve abatement application with tax year 2021 for parcel 8010806 in the amount of $137.38.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Shannon.
Thank you.
And your team.
Item 17, Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Item A is a facilities locating and marking contract with USIC, and I realize that I don't remember what the USIC stands for, but at any rate, currently, our engineering techs go out and locate any of our storm sewer or those types of facilities in the Rapid Valley area. So, when everybody, when anybody has a construction project and they call and they call for locates, and it might interfere with our storm sewer, our techs have to go out there and locate those. With this contract, it'll take that burden off of those individuals. Sometimes what they get, emergency locates, which they have to go out there after hours, which we then have to pay them overtime. And USIC is the contractor that actually does a lot of the locating services around here. So, they actually better serve the contractors if the same person is doing all the locates out there at the same time. I believe this will actually save us money in the long run, taking it off of our engineering techs and getting them, getting USIC to do this. It'll also save us money, and we'll have one contractor to do it. Currently, we hire Jim's Locating Services to do our electrical work, such as the light poles on Longview and Liberty Boulevard are just a couple of the electrical facilities that we have. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
So, Joe, when I read through this, I found the, it's kind of interesting and didn't understand it. So, you had 750 locate requests during the course of this year so far?
Correct.
And, or you say that only 166 of them required on-ground marking to protect our facilities. So, what happens with the others?
So, essentially, from my understanding, is those 750 requests, you know, the contractor puts in a request, like such, we do, you know, a stretch of road or something like that, and it's found that they're, they're not working anywhere within a reasonable distance of our facility, so there's no need to mark, go out there and market. If there is, I believe it's within five or six feet of our facilities, we have to go out there and locate it for them. And we generally, like the locating contractor, they give you an 18 inches either side of center, right? So, you have to bottle and find the facilities with that. So, I believe that's what that is.
Okay. So, your locator is the one that actually studies that and figures out which ones he has to go to personally to?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions to Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Your motion. Commissioner LaCroix.
Move to approve the facilities locating and marketing services contract with USIC Locating Services LLC.
There a second?
Second.
In a second. Any public comment? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B.
Item B is authorization to advertise and let for bids for recycled asphalt products. So, this is, this is coming from, we had some asphalt milling at our benchmark pit that we placed on Rochford, and then we did a base stabilization project on that. That project turned out very well, and it's holding up very well. And talking to the contractor that did that, the asphalt millings, really helped solidify that and bind that product together. So, with that being said, we're doing base stabilization on Sage Creek next year. We're doing approximately 17 miles of it. So, we're hoping to put out the feelers to anybody that's in the area that may have some asphalt milling that they're looking to get rid of, because we're looking for such a vast quantity, it will likely surpass our $25,000 supplies bid limit by state statute. So, that's why we're seeking authorization to bid for this. We currently have about 2,200 tons in our wall yard, so we're looking for about another 10,000 yards. We did an experiment with LTAP on Longview. When we did that, I think it was three years ago, we mixed millings 50% basically with our gravel surfacing. And it was found that when you mix those millings and your gravel surfacing together, you actually get a higher density, so you get a better product rather than just laying, laying just millings or just gravel. You get a, you get a higher density. So, that's one of the reasons we're just simply putting the feelers out there to see if there's anybody in the area that has asphalt millings that they want to get rid of, so.
Okay.
Gustaf's standing over there, maybe you can help. He's like, "Thanks for sharing, Deb."
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
So, Joe, does, how much, how many tons would it take to do a mile? If you did the mixture of the millings and what you're doing? Because you have 22 tons, really, that's not a lot.
2,200.
2,200.
So, that'll do roughly about probably a mile and a half. General rule of thumb for a 24-foot road top, it takes about 1,600 tons of material to do a mile at 24-foot wide, two inches deep. Obviously, the road widths vary greatly, and you're not always getting that exactly two inches. So, your, your material varies a little bit there. So, usually, we add about 10%, but 1,600 tons per mile for two inches of materials is a good rule of thumb. What's that?
With the premix.
So, it'd be about 800 tons of asphalt millings and 800 tons of gravel surfacing. So, it's 1,600 tons together.
That's where, we would be there in a, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve. Any public comment? Back to the Commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Joe. Items from Human Resources. Carol again.
Good morning again. Carol Bancroft, Human Resources Director for Pennington County. The first item is the Drug-Free Workplace Act of 1988 requires some federal contractors and all federal grantees to agree that they will provide drug-free workplaces as a precondition of receiving a contractor grant from a federal agency. The United States Department of Labor policy states it is illegal for employers to manufacture, distribute, dispense, or have in possession prohibited controlled substances. So, the enforcement of the law is not limited to one department or jurisdiction. Even with recent legislation approving medical marijuana use in South Dakota, marijuana is still considered a controlled substance due to it being illegal under federal law. I'm seeking board approval for the chairperson to add their signature to the 2023 Drug-Free Workplace Resolution included in your packets.
Questions to Carol?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Carol, I think at one time, we were looking at this differently last year. If recreational had passed, we may have had, may have had to do some different changes. But at this point in time, with medical, it's regulated. So, I, you know, I think this is appropriate, because it, still, medical still, you have to have the permits and approval from your doctors and so forth. But I, so I, I still, I agree with this. But if something should change, then we would have to review this policy in the future.
Correct.
Okay, that's...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lester.
Move to approve, chair signature. Wait a minute, which one was it? Move to approve the 2023 Resolution for Drug-Free Workplace Act Certification.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Saying none. Back to the Commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Item B.
So, the Elected Officials' Compensation Levels for Fiscal Year 22, that I'm seeking board approval for the chairperson to add their signature to the elected official compensation levels for fiscal year 22, as presented to the Board of Commissioners meeting on December 6th of 2022.
Any questions to Carol on this?
Chairman.
Commissioner Haidt.
I didn't know 7-12-15 on the sheriff's salary? I guess I haven't read it before. The Board of County Commissioners may not decrease, which we already know, the salary of the sheriff on consecutive terms, or any sheriff having responsibility for managing a full-time jail. Isn't that what you guys do, Brian? No matter what, and receive an additional 10% added to the base salary listed in the sub, in the section? I'm, maybe I've never read that before, but maybe other counties don't pay as much or something? I have no idea. But I've never heard any sheriff having responsibility for managing a full-time jail. I just never read through these, I guess, to understand that that was in there. I don't have any problem with that, or I'm not saying anything. I just didn't know that was 7-12-15, that that was one of the things that was written under the sheriffs. Because I always thought, you know, that's a given that you guys do a full-time managing a jail. So, I thought I'd bring that up. I don't know if other people read that before, but I think that is kind of weird to put that in there, and I don't know why they might have put in managing the jails an extra 10%. Because I thought, like I said, Carol, that's what the Sheriff's Office does, don't they? Or maybe other counties? Brian, do other counties? Do they not manage the jails if you're the sheriff? Okay, okay. I never thought about that. They do, some do contract down. So, that's why they put it in there. I just couldn't figure out why they would. Okay.
Other questions to Carol?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
You know, when I was looking through these, and I'll ask Carol and Deb since on the Compensation Committee. You know, I've got some concerns over the base salaries starting, starting out as far, are they comparable to other areas? And I think they're legit. I think some things, great things have changed in the last couple of years. And if we want qualified candidates running for these offices, I think we need to kind of look at comparing them to employees and the elected. I mean, quite frankly, sometimes there's a loss or not very much difference. And so, my request, if, if the Commission's okay with it, I'd like to see the Compensation Committee kind of review these starting salaries and give a recommendation.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Haidt.
I think we did, and then I think we thought, if I'm correct, that they were fair as a starting. And then what we're at today as well was fair because of responsibilities. We do a lot different, I think, in Pennington County for responsibilities for some of the register of deeds, some of the treasures, some even the sheriff with the care campus and different things that... If you'd like to have us look at it again, I think for the starting, because we went through this before, for just people that are coming in, once they learn those responsibilities and so things, we can always move them up we have on other people. But I think for the starting wage, I think, if I'm correct, not, not from maybe the discussion with compensation, but from this commission that I've been in before, that that was a good base salary, and that if anybody had more responsibilities or have been like a, maybe a deputy sheriff, or not deputy, deputy director sheriff, and Brian have never got your title, and I apologize fully. Or even with like the experience that Cindy had when she came in and the experience that if like Audra came in, it's a whole different story that we can, if we need to bump them up as a commission, we have done that because we know they know those responsibilities. If you first come in and you haven't been in one of those responsibilities before, you're in a learning process, so I think it's only fair to start and then move you up base like you would an employee on, when you get those responsibilities down and you have that experience to move you up further on the wage scale.
Well, sir.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Yeah, I agree, Deb. We have done that in the past. But I was just, just point-blank, after reviewing some, some in our community, I thought these really didn't reflect some of the jobs, you know, that are out there on the streets right now for being competitive. And I'm not quite sure where the, where the difference is between... I absolutely get what you're saying, Deb, but we have, as a commission, done that. You know, new one come in, we have bumped them up because they're experienced. But I'm just thinking the base is pretty... Something to look at. I'm not going to say it's unfair. I'm not going to say it's just something I would probably like a little more information on in order to be really comfortable with.
I think, I think Carol is working on this and been studying it, and I suspect that she'll be coming back to us in the near future with her findings on it. And I tend to agree. I think Pennington County has been very fortunate with the, with newly elected officials that have had a lot of experience in the present, not, not in the elected official position, but been with that department for a long period of time. Cindy certainly had that experience going into the auditor's office. Brian certainly has that going into the sheriff's office. Audra was in the register of deeds office prior to Donna resigning and so forth. So, I do think that as a commission, we, we need to look at this as to the experience that some of these people are bringing to us. It's not like hiring a new employee. They have a lot of experience.
I agree that it would be really prudent of us to review this just as we do all of our different wage scales, to make sure, and do it on an annual basis, to make sure that we are being competitive and recognizing the, the efforts of these individuals. So, yes, this is something that I am working on.
Okay. But in the meantime, I think we need to adopt the resolution, because it may impact others on this wage scale.
Motion to approve?
We've got a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any public comment? Back to the Commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item C.
So, included in our fiscal year 23 Human Resource approved budget is the expansion of our contract with NeoGov, and it's to include the core module for comprehensive onboarding, electronic forms, and reporting tools for county administrative employees. So, this agreement includes a one-time setup fee of $57,600 and the 2023 contact, contract price of $28,011.50. So, the, the first year total for 2023 is $85,601.50. So, my predecessor did an excellent job of negotiating a three-year contract, which we are not obligated to renew the contract if we decide that it is not something that is functional for us. But the, the terms are that it cannot increase more than 3% in that three-year term. And so, typically, it's more like 6% to 7%. So, it was excellent negotiations. So, I am seeking the board chairperson's signature on the agreement to implement the NeoGov Core HR Module in 2023. So, I stand for questions.
Commissioner Haidt.
So, tell me what NeoGov basically does for us, Ms. Carol.
NeoGov, then, what we currently have with NeoGov is that the application process, so when we go out for recruiting and posting positions, that, that is the tool that we are using. And then also, it has the performance appraisal process in it, so the performance management. So, that's what we have currently. So, enhancing it with the core functionality would give us the ability to move to more digital forms and interactions with our employees, that they would have access to the tool as well to fill out forms online. They can also add comments and such, or upload any documents, et cetera. So, now we have employee files that are cabinets and cabinets, and this would be moving that information to digital format.
Okay, so, first year is $85,000, and it says reoccurring. So, the reoccurring is added to the second year as well?
The reoccurring would be around that approximate $28,000 with a possible 3% increase.
Okay, and then, so the next year is 42 plus the reoccurring from the year before? Or just the reoccurring at 42?
In year two is 42,000, so there's no more setup fee. That, that's one time.
And then 56,000 the third year? So, tell me, in three years, you'll be ready to re, you would re-up them, or you would be trained in this, so you wouldn't have to re-up them? I mean, what would be the services for committing someone, or committing us for three years and then deciding, "Okay, this is a great idea," or "We just need some of their service"? I mean, what is your intentions in the three years, Ms. Carol?
Until we actually see it in practice and how functional it is for us at that three years, I do anticipate that we would continue that subscription with them, and we'd renegotiate as far as what the pricing would be. as far as what the pricing would be.
So the pricing would be the three-year end at 56, or it would be different?
After three years, that we would have to renegotiate as far as what the contract price would be.
You know, if this is, like, have you done this before? Have you, have you seen this before, Ms. Carol?
As far as in prior experience, yes. And it, it really does. It modernizes as far as your abilities to, for documents retention and record keeping. And it also is very interactive with the employees. And so it, it just, again, it is so good from a standpoint that, say, for example, that you're onboarding employees, they can fill out like their I-9, their W-4s, et cetera. They can fill that out pre-orientation day, and then we have all of that documentation. If they need to change their W-4 at any point in time, they can do that. And then we can pull reports and see, the reporting functionality is really tremendous within this tool.
So bottom line, it makes it more efficient.
Absolutely.
Employees and, or HR to be able to track.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms.
So I think, Carol, your predecessor, John, had brought this to us at budget time last year.
Right.
And, and then at the national convention, I got to visit some actual meeting where it was essentially mostly new people that had just moved over to the NeoGov, and, and the room was full. And so obviously, they're getting a lot of traction. I didn't hear any negatives in regard to it at all. And at that point, we had already approved the budget that John brought to us relative to this. So I certainly don't have any expertise in this area. That's going to be you. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
Just a little follow-up. I'm thinking the NeoGov that we approved, didn't that also have some educational pieces to it, to where the employees could go in and do, get the training that they needed to, you know, for their department or, just like I'm saying, pre-qualization or similar that they could do, and we could keep track of it? Doesn't it have some of that piece incorporated into it?
It does as far as using NeoGov. I think what you're referring to is Relias, which is another standalone module.
Then, okay. Thank you.
So, and I did, oh, excuse me.
Any further questions, Carol? Okay. Go ahead, Carol.
I wanted to share that I had the opportunity to see the demo on the core module and was very impressed with the functionality of it and the training that they provide. So I'm very comfortable with it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I'd move to approve the chair's signature on the ordering documents of the implementation of the onboarding e-forms and core HR modules with NeoGov.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission.
Here.
Commissioner Edgar.
I just wanted to thank Carol for getting the memo for dressing the same today. So that was really nice of her to, me and her to get together and decide that we dressed the same. I'm just teasing you, Ms. Carol.
It is the festive season.
Well, it looks like most of the women from our county have green on, so we didn't get their memo, but we did get our own, so thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Ms. Carol.
Item D.
So the risk manager position that I'm requesting the board review and approve to create and add a risk manager position to the human resources department, that this new exempt position will provide innovative solutions to mitigate and/or transfer risk in order to protect the county's physical and financial assets. This position would be a key resource in directing the county's insurance programs from risk through program implementation and monitoring effectiveness. As the county continues to grow and expand the physical and financial assets as well as our employees, that this function is a key resource in advising business management of risk exposure and risk adverse safety training. So this position is not included in the 2023 fiscal year budget, which may require a budget supplement request. And the new position title and DBM rating are, the position would be risk manager. The status is that's a new title and DBM, and it's assigned for 2023 as a C-52 at a base hourly rate of $38.79. So the motion could read that I move to approve the creation of the risk manager position at a DBM of C-52 with a base pay rate of $38.79 per hour and authorize HR to update the position listing on file. It is further moved to authorize one new FTE in 2023 to fill the risk manager position to be located in the human resources department. I stand for questions.
Carol, I've long been a proponent of having this position within the county, and I think it only makes sense with the amount of insurance coverage that we need to carry, not only for property, but for liability, for workers' compensation, et cetera. I think it does need somebody that can pay more attention, direct attention to that. Plus, the safety of our employees, I think, is critical, and I would look at that as being another portion of the, of a risk manager, looking out for employee safety, coming up with programs, monitoring those, working with department heads to assist in those areas where, we've, we've got a lot of employees that have specific jobs that are different than, than others. And, and some of those are really a great personal bodily risk in their jobs. So I look at this as an investment rather than an expense to have a person like this onboard. I think overall that, that this position will probably pay for itself over a period of time. So I very much support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edgar.
I still moved Carol, Ms. Carol's motion.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the risk manager position. Any public comment?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroix.
I too do support this because, you know, in a time in our society, we were always, we're always trying to do more with less. And so we try to put multiple tasks and jobs on one department or one individual. And I do feel this is one of the areas that, in order to do it best, it needs to be focused on subtly. And there's multiple facets to this position that I think will work well for us. I mean, one, half of our employees are in high stress, high demand, 24/7 operations. I know the sheriff's doing a good job with, with the mental health and some other wellness things, but I think the risk management part is a key part also that, that will help our employees and our county.
I agree with that, that our employees are truly our most valued asset. So investing in them through this manner is a very wise move.
I'll ask one more time. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it. Items from the public. I don't have any speaker request forms, but I'll ask if there's any, any items from the public that they would like to bring before the commission. That's not on the agenda today. Anything that's discussed would not be able to have any action taken on. Seeing none, I will close out the public comment. And this is very untypical. We're setting at 10 o'clock, and our next hearing starts at 10:30. So I would take a motion to recess until 10:30.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Pennington County Commission, back to order. I need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Cody.
Cody Sacrament, environmental planner. Agenda INMA subdivision regulation variance SV 22-11 is to exceed more than 40 units on a dead-end road system. The applicant is Brian Schroeder. This has been heard before the Board of Commissioners, before it was continued to today's date. The applicant is actually requesting to deny the request without prejudice. They're working on solutions to try to find a way around the, the dead-end road system by either putting in another road or dedicating an easement. So they just want some time to be able to do that. So staff is going to recommend to deny without prejudice with the applicant's concurrence.
Moved to deny.
Second, without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yeah.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second to deny without prejudice. Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Megan Talmadge, planner. Agenda INB is variance 22-26 to allow a residential structure that does not meet the minimum dimensions of 20 by 20 feet. The applicant is Matt Leon, and he is in the audience if there are any questions. The location is near Nemo Road and Pine Drive. The current zoning is agriculture district. The existing land use is vacant. The access is off of Nemo Road, and there is no flood hazard. For variances, the county takes a two-pronged approach when considering the variance. Prong one, prong one is whether granting the variance runs counter to the public interest. The criteria is listed on screen. One, no, the request does not appear to be a threat of safety to the neighborhood. The proposed structure is 14 by 20 feet with no running water or electricity. Two, no, it appears the existing residences in the area do not, area meet the, excuse me, it appears the existing residences in the area meet the 20 by 20 foot dimensions. Three, no, the zoning ordinance does not allow residential structures with dimensions less than 20 by 20 feet. The zoning ordinance allows for variances when strict application would result in practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, which would deprive an owner of reasonable use of his land. Four, yes, future land use is identified as ranchette, which requires a five-acre lot size. Five, no, the remote cabin will not affect the safety, health, or general welfare, welfare of the community. Prong two is whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. One, no, the applicant has the option to place a 20 by 20 foot structure in a way that does not require the variance. The property is currently vacant with no onsite wastewater system. This request was routed for interdepartmental review. The highway department commented that if any roads are constructed within or along the section line, they must be built to ordinance 14 standards, and buildings must meet section line setback requirements. Emergency services and addressing commented that the cabin will need a Nemo Road physical address posted in accordance with Pennington County ordinance number 20. The onsite wastewater environmental planner commented that while there are no concerns with the current proposal, when the applicant decides to install the vault privy, all rules of Pennington County zoning ordinance 204J must be followed, as well as receive approval from the DNR. The applicant applied for a variance to allow the 14 by 20 foot remote cabin on November 30th, 2022. Staff performed site visit on December 12th. The applicant has sufficient area to accommodate a 20 by 20 foot structure. The structure would not be considered an efficiency dwelling unit. The structure will have no running water or electricity, and the bathroom will not be located within the structure. At the time of the application submitted, the applicant stated that they would like a composting toilet, but has reconsidered and is working to approve a vault privy through the DNR instead. The land survey monuments on the property indicate that section lines align with the fence on the property line. Denying this variance would not deprive owners of reasonable use of their land, as the owner can construct a cabin that could meet the 20 by 20 foot requirement. With that, staff recommends denial as there are no special conditions that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance 204. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves their request, staff recommends one condition of approval.
Any questions, Megan? Matt, do you wish to come up? Matt, you're the applicant on this.
Yes, sir.
You, as you know, the staff has recommended denial to it.
I have. I spoke to Megan already.
Okay, so let's hear your story.
Sure. I guess what I'd like to say is that it's truly an off-grid, kind of a gathering place. There's no, there's no kitchen, there's no mechanical room, there's no bathroom. It's unnecessary to have a larger structure for what I intend its use as. Because of that, you know, just to add another extra square foot is just to accommodate is unnecessary, and it's a burden because then I have to pay more, quite a bit more, actually, if you look at it. So for that reason, I'm requesting a variance.
So, so fast, you're looking at is 14 by 20?
I already have the plans. I'm working with the state on getting a toilet. Yep.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
No, I think we have to better define residential structure because a residential structure to some is a full-time, being occupied full-time as a residential structure. And then we also have a seasonal structure, and that's what I feel this is, just as the applicant had stated, it, it isn't really a residential structure that's going to be lived in year-round. It's going to be used as a cabin on a part-time basis. So I think going forward, it'd be easier if we could somehow identify the different types of residential structures.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Based off of that, and I was kind of writing some notes about, you know, what defines a residential structure. If it doesn't have water going to it, if it doesn't have a bathroom built into it, do we really consider it a residential structure, or is it just a structure? Because he's sleeping in it, it's considered a residential. I mean, kind of what is that variable, and mainly this is probably for the staff, if there's a very specific definition of what residential structure is? I mean, does it have to have a kitchen? Does it have to have running water? Does it have to be?
Cody Sacrament, environmental planner. So from my understanding, the applicant stated that he was going to use it as living quarters, which would kick in the 20 by 20 requirement for it. However, after listening to what he just described, if there's no kitchen, to me, it's basically him sleeping in a shed. That would actually be a conditional use permit. So I, I think we're getting a little mixed up on what, what, what's actually being requested. Because when we hear you're using it as living quarters, I believe he originally applied for a conditional use permit for a tiny home, but then it didn't meet the definition of a tiny home. So from my, from staff's understanding, it had a kitchen, it had a living room, it had sleeping quarters. But to me, this would, honest, honestly, a variance wouldn't be required at this point. It'd be a conditional use permit to basically.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Living in a shed.
And if, Mr. Chair, if I may follow up, did y'all have any of those, did you kind of walk through with Cody some of your plans, or did you just say, hey, I'm looking for a tiny home, and then, oh, it doesn't meet that, so, or Megan, I'm sorry?
I think, I think I showed Megan kind of a, didn't I?
I believe that you worked with Kelsey on that.
Oh, okay.
Kelsey Roush, sorry, Megan Talmadge, planner. You worked with Kelsey Roush on that, but again, it was my understanding that it would be living quarters.
And, well, I guess you have to define living quarters. Am I going to be, am I going to be there during the afternoon and, you know, sitting on the deck and having a beer, maybe? Yeah. Am I living there then? No. Am I going to stay overnight on a weekend with my grandkids, maybe? Yeah. Am I living there? Not living there. I mean, it's going to be a very minimally used thing, you know what I mean? So I, I guess they have to, originally, I was told I needed a conditional use permit, and then it somehow became a variance, so I'm not sure where we're at there exactly.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is not like, I'm not spending weeks up there with guests and kids and, you know, and overnight with my kids. It's 11 miles out of town.
Camping, hunting, something of that nature, whatever.
I'm sorry, what?
Camping, hunting with your kids, or?
Yeah, I mean, if my kids want to go out and go hunting, they want their kids to hang out with them, they stay the night, yeah, okay, great, but it doesn't have a kitchen, it doesn't have an indoor bathroom, it doesn't have, it has a wood, it'll have a wood stove, I mean.
I'm tracking. That's the reason why I started asking the questions, that I did, so, okay.
And it's really cost prohibitive to get the utilities to that point. I mean, it would be, you couldn't do it.
It didn't even have power, right?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
What is it?
Yeah, uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. So the definition of living space is all floors area, all floor areas that are heated, thus providing a combination for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, or any combination thereof.
Eating, sleeping, cooking?
So what is he, Cody?
To me, this seems more like a conditional use permit to have, to stay s- part-time in a shed, is basically what we've come down to. I think Megan's going to answer it there.
While she's coming up, Mr. Chair, I just have a general question, since she's come up here, because she might fold this into that. Is it better to deny this without prejudice, so you can apply for the C U P, if, if that's the route we go? Or is it better to continue this and have it transitioned to a C U P? That way, we're kind of getting that while you're up here.
So Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office, so I was actually listening from the back, and I think probably what needs to happen is just continue this item, so that way the applicant can meet with the planning department again, so that way they can have conversations about what he actually wants to do, because it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion between what he is saying he wants to do now and what he has said he wanted to do before. So it's probably best to just continue this, so that we can actually figure out what he wants to do.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I, yeah, whatever you guys recommend.
I'd move to continue.
Yep, second.
The next meeting.
Thank you.
And that, be under the understanding he's going to meet with them to decide.
One hundred percent.
So the motion is strictly to continue this? Until the January third?
Yes, sir.
Meeting, is that? Can you second that? Yep, I second it. Uh, so is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to continue this item to the January third meeting indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? To, um, adjourn this Board of Adjustment and reconvene this Board of Commissioners? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, Britt.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item C is preliminary plan P P L twenty-two dash fifty-five for Michael and Lisa Gennaro, K T M Design Solutions as the agent, to reconfigure lot lines to create tracks A and B of Gennaro subdivision, and Planning Commission recommended approval of preliminary plan P P L twenty-two dash five-five with four conditions. And item D is conditional use permit review C twenty-one thirty-nine for Paul and Carol Neiman to review a recreational vehicle park in an agriculture district. And Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of conditional use permit C twenty-one thirty-nine with eighteen conditions.
Any members of the public who wish to have either of these items on the consent agenda to be polled for discussion? Any members of the commission wishing to have any item polled? Now to take a motion. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? Uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item E.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item E is vacation on plat V P twenty-two dash zero one. It's due vacate notes on plat, on the plat for lot three, block one of Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant is Joey Jola and Tracy Measure. Uh, location is off Eleanor Drive, involves three acres. Currently zoned planning and development district. Existing land use is vacant. Again, access is off Eleanor Drive, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the property is vacant of any structures. On December sixth, uh, twenty twenty-two, subdivision regulation variance S V twenty-two dash ten to waive water storage requirements was approved by the Board of Adjustment. This was rather off any department review. There were no attractions or concerns ever received. The applicants are requesting to vacate notes seven, eight, nine, thirteen, and fourteen for lot three, block one of Mountain Meadows Estates. Mountain Meadows subdivision notes seven and nine state that prior to the issuance of a building permit, that two suitable onsite wastewater treatment system areas be identified and accompanied by percolation tests and soil profile holes certified by a registered professional engineer or licensed plumber. In the time since the subdivision was created, the county has adopted section two oh four J, which adjusts the septic. The county environmental planner inspects profile holes and reviews percolation tests for compliance. Therefore, staff would be in favor of vacating notes seven and nine. Uh, note eight states that advanced, advanced treatment units are required to be installed on the lots. Uh, due to environmental concerns, staff would oppose vacating this note. And the notes thirteen and fourteen state that after sixty-five building permits have been issued, surety for increasing water storage is guaranteed, and that prior to the eightieth building permit, water storage be increased to ninety-five thousand gallons for Restmore Ranch and Mountain Meadows subdivision. Again, the applicants have obtained the variance not to increase that water storage. Uh, three other properties in the Mountain Meadows subdivisions have had notes seven, nine, thirteen, and fourteen vacated. The request to vacate note eight was denied in all previous requests. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of vacation of plat V P twenty-two dash zero one with two conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Lassiter.
Cody, I know we've vacated some, on some of these plats in the area. Are these the consistent ones that are being recommended, the seven, nine, thirteen, and fourteen? Are those the ones that we've consistently, um, have vacated off plats?
Correct. This is the fourth request. The previous three have had, uh, note seven, nine, thirteen, and fourteen vacated, but note eight was left on there. And, uh, one, only one lot has actually been developed, and they did put in an A T U unit.
So as long as this is consistent with what we've been doing, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lassiter. I'd make the motion, uh, to approve with the two, uh, conditions. Got a motion and a second to approve with the two conditions? Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F.
Item F is planning and development overlay P U twenty-two dash sixteen. It's to allow a planning and development overlay for a specialty resort. The applicant and landowner is Black Hills Weddings L L C, Andy and Jen Pfister. Location of property is ten four hundred West Highway forty-four. Involve six point two eight acres. Currently zoned highway service district, which in the existing land use is a wedding venue. Again, access is off West Highway forty-four, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, the zoning ordinance section two sixteen lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a P U D overlay district. The answers are on the screens. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional use per- permits in a highway service district. And number two, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental in- influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of a highway service district. Number four, yes, the proposed P U D overlay district is six point two eight acres. Number five, yes, the proposed P U D overlay district is owned by the applicant and managers, Andy and Jen Pfister. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district are not designed as to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven, Pennington County zoning ordinance section five-ten criteria is listed on the following table. Again, uh, the answers are on the screen, and I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses of values or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed P U D overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed P U D overlay district contains adequate utilities, access road drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and ingress as to minimize traffic congestion on West Highway forty-four. And number six, the requested use conforms to all regulations of a highway service district with an pro- with an improved P U D overlay district. And number seven, yes, the future land use is identified as highway service district. Especially, specialty type resorts are consistent use within this district. Uh, currently on the property, there's a single-family residence that was built in nineteen sixty-seven, an office building that was built in nineteen sixty-four, a twenty-eight by thirty-four detached garage, a gazebo, uh, bathrooms of forty by a hundred semi-permanent tent, a detached garage, and an onsite wastewater treatment system that was placed in nineteen seventy-seven. This was rather off any department review. There were no major comments or concerns that were received. The applicants are requesting the P U D overlay district, uh, to have a specialty resort, which includes the following uses. A wedding venue slash event menu, which is not a use by right in the district. Uh, ten rental cabins, which is a use by right, a shower house, which is a use by right, an office building is a use by right if it supports the business. House or caretaker's residence, not a use by right. Solar tap house used by right, and a wedding structure slash chapel, which is not a use by right. The subject property is currently legal, non-conforming for a wedding venue. This P U D overlay will bring the property into compliance and allow the applicants to expand the venue. Staff finds no significant, significant issues with the applicant's request. As the, as the uses requested are in harmony with, is either a use by right or a conditional use permit in the highway service district. So with that, staff is recommending approval of planning and development overlay P U twenty-two dash sixteen with conditions.
Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Um, I'm in full support of this, but I would like to make a slight modification to the, uh, number eight, under condition that instead of, uh, quiet hours being from, uh, twelve A M to eight A M, I'd rather see that ten P M to eight A M. Uh, there are, uh, there is an apartment complex across the street, and, uh, to be fair to them, I think, uh, quiet hours, uh, really shouldn't be extended to midnight for a wedding venue. I think ten o'clock P M would be appropriate. That's just, uh, my suggestion.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
Has there been, has anybody known, is there any complaints that have been on this wedding venue since it started in nineteen eighty-seven, I think?
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, we didn't get any complaints about noise until after, uh, the letters were sent out. Um, but I, I don't know complaints that happened ten, twelve years ago, if there was one. Um, I will say that the conditions that were in here, um, are consistent with another specialty resort that was approved in highway service with a wedding venue and, and cabins as well.
Did it, what was the hours, Cody, on that venue?
Uh, the exact same that's in this condition. So it's, um, operated between eight A M and twelve A M, and quiet hours are from twelve A M to eight A M. And I believe that's the hours that they've been operating since the wedding venue's been.
If there was a lot of complaints, if it wasn't, if it was right next door, that might be a little bit different for me, but I think, um, it's a wedding venue. It's, I respect the neighbors, um, and what they're saying on, on the quiet hours, but I also understand that these people have been there a long time, so, um, without discourse on their property. So I'm in favor of leaving it like it is.
I do have a speaker request for Marcus Warnke. Marcus?
Good morning. I'm the treasurer of Big Piney Road District. Um, I'm also a forester in my professional capacity. Uh, I have some concerns, um, one being about the cabins. Uh, those are not currently in the wedding venues operation of business. So that's completely changing, I feel, the, uh, the scope of the business. Um, that ground there has already been significantly disturbed when that shop was put in, which caused serious drainage issues on that property. And also, if you can see, there's another, uh, access to that shop that came off of Big Piney Road that was not there before, and nor was it really agreed upon by the road district to have that access.
So when was, when was that put in?
That road?
Yeah.
Four or five years ago?
Okay, so prior to the previous, to the current?
The current owner, yep, yep. So, um, concerns that we have with the road district is that it's going to increase traffic on our road. We have a significant loan out right now on having that road asphalted. Um, so it's in our best interest to limit the amount of traffic to the current residents on there, and those cabins are going to intentionally or unintentionally increase the traffic on our road. Also, by removing all of those trees where those cabins are going to go, you're going to exacerbate the water runoff problem. Those trees take up a lot of water, um, and it's been a huge issue for them in the past. They put down sediment, um, strips to try and stop some of that runoff, but, uh, you know, by removing all of those trees and what could potentially be significant grading, you're looking at changing the, the landscape there quite a bit. Um, and lastly, the concern of having those cabins is that, yes, quiet hours, you know, twelve A M to eight A M, uh, may sound good. I think in the past, they've actually stopped, uh, everything at eleven P M, which was great. Um, I don't hear it so much where I am, but I know across the highway, uh, they do. And I think it reverberates off of the rim rock that is above our neighborhood. And, uh, folks that live over in the Evergreen neighborhood, across the way, the retirement community, uh, they can hear everything that comes off of that wedding venue, clear as day. Um, so I would take those residents' concerns. I have heard concerns. Maybe they didn't, haven't filed public complaints, but, uh, it is definitely a concern to some of those folks over there. Um, and having those cabins there, having people who have just been having a really good time at a wedding, uh, going up there, um, without any, so the former owners, uh, Joanne, lived on-site, and she ran a pretty tight ship, from what I understand. Uh, the, the current owners do not live on-site, so if they plan on having something like that, I would insist that they need to have a full-time person living up there and policing, um, and basically, you know, enforcing those quiet hours, because you can see how close it is to some of our houses. And with ten cabins with potentially intoxicated wedding goers, um, one, I'm concerned about the noise not stopping, and two, I'm concerned about, uh, someone starting a, a little campfire and, and seeing what that could do. It is a south-facing slope. There's a dense standard timber on the other side of the power lines, and there is a potential for a fire to get up in there and run off, so those are my main concerns.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haggard.
So Marcus, were you there before the venue? Were the neighbors there before the venue started?
I was not. I moved in in twenty sixteen. And as I said, I haven't heard, uh, our first year there, it was, it was loud. There were some evenings where I heard it, but it seemed like in the past few years, it kind of quieted down from, from our house.
So how, so the venue's there since nineteen eighty-seven. When did the residents, did the, were the residents already up there before the venue was there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the neighbor, um, my neighbor across the street, the, the McKeerans, they, they built up there in the early seventies, and my house was built in nineteen seventy-seven by Mike Lindy.
And if there was, Marcus, if there was complaint on, on, um, it's, it's better if you complain, so we know that we're, you know, it's not just Marcus that has an issue with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the drainage, if that, that is an issue, hopefully, our planning department can go up there and look, and it looks like they're nodding their heads. The traffic, do they do venues all year during the winter and?
They typically do not have weddings in the winter, but, uh, I believe some of the discussions that were had at the last meeting, I, I would have liked to have been here for that, but I didn't get my certified letter until the day the meeting happened, so, um, some of the discussions was that they hope to rent those cabins out through the winter as well. So again, that kind of changes the scope of the business, and that they haven't been holding weddings typically during the, uh, winter months.
With the traffic increase, I was going to say that they probably do part-time, so that your road is actually not used as, you know, as much, but if they're going to change their venue, that makes a difference. And maybe the solution here is the eleven o'clock and not the twelve o'clock. So it's kind of a?
That could be part of it. Again, the access, um, you know, we understand that they have their own access off Highway forty-four, but, uh, there's no signage indicating that they can't use that road currently or anything like that, so, um, I'm, I still have concerns about that.
So tell me about the access again. The access goes into their venue, your access?
Yeah, so if you see the entrance off of Highway forty-four, on the farthest east there, is Big Piney Road.
Okay.
And then the next one is the entrance to the wedding venue. But you can see that there is two different, or three different access spots to the property off of Big Piney Road. So trying to limit them from using Big Piney to access the rest of the property is what I would like to see done if that were to go forward.
So maybe for their business, they need to have better signage?
Signage, or even some gates off of that, off of Big Piney.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Marcus, for the discussion.
Commissioner Haggard.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was at the planning commission when this come up, that's why I was trying to say the access to Big, how many people are on this? We had a representative at the planning commission with on the road district and she testified what what you would like to see done. And what, if I remember correctly, and Cody, you can help me, is the main interest is is coming right up to there and then they're gonna have signage direction going up to the cabins from that side road to keep them off. The Big Piney Road, if I'm correct, if that was one of the requirements.
Uh correct. So uh Chris Sanger, my mental planner, the applicants, so this is the main entrance in. Um and that's uh according to the applicant, that's really the only entrance that prospective clients know um is to come up here th- through here, and she said that this would not be used for any and any access by any of the the people in the cabins. Um so you you are correct on that, yes.
Correct. So that, I just wanted to point that out, that that was part of the discussion with another representative from the road district at the planning commission last week.
So there, so there, let me ask you a question. So the area that Cody just pointed out, that's not part of the road district?
No, that's their entrance. The pine hi, uh Big Piney Road district is that one right on the the section line.
Okay.
Going up, so their main interest is there and that was their concern, just as he stated with the road being redone. But there is a second access coming off of their property where that garage is. But they do have a road going up there and they agree that since their main interest isn't Big Piney, that they'd be using that and they'd be stopping off checking and they they tell the guests to be using that other road, not using Big Piney. So that, and putting signage up for it, that was one of the discussions at the planning commission meeting. So that was dis- discussed thoroughly and and their understanding. That's why I asked how many people are on this road district, because we, I I thought we were dealing with the president of the road district at that meeting, but.
Yeah, I'm the treasurer.
That was, okay, so she was there. Now I remember, okay. The the other thing I wanted to just mention is, you know, on item eight, it says that that we're talking about for uh restrictions, that the hours of operation for the above mentioned venue and event center shall be between eight A M and twelve A Ms. That says they're gonna operate for that amount of time. But the music part on number nine states that the outdoor music will be limited to only which supports the wedding ceremonies from twelve to eight P M. So it'll be shutting down at eight P M as far as the music, unless there's music indoors. And so that, to me, through the planning commission was a part of the you know, the quiet hours were, yeah, there's not gonna be music playing at bands till midnight unless they're indoors, so. That's part of the requirements that are in incorporated in in this. So the suggestion that that Ron had made, I think is kind of null to my point, because I think it's covered in the uh restrictions that were placed on the applicant.
Well, it's a semi-permanent tent when they're indoors, so it doesn't hold sound in very effectively. So you mentioned that they stopped their outdoor ceremonies, and that's true, but you can still hear everything coming out of the tent.
I think part of this overall plan, and I appreciate what they've laid out, is that that's gonna be a permanent structure where that tent is eventually.
And that should help with the sound, yeah, yep.
So I I appreciated what they, how they laid it out uh when they made their request for planned unit development of putting in there of not uh basically making us aware of everything that's in the plan over a ten-year period of time. A lot of this won't take place immediately, take place over a period of time, which I think really helps as far as knowing uh what is planned for the future of that, instead of doing something now and then two years now coming in and making adjustments and two years after that, making other adjustments. I think they've laid out a good plan for what they're, what they would like to do. Commissioner Lasser.
Well, I think I've kind of addressed some of what I was gonna ask. Uh the big question that I was gonna ask, since you're on the road district and you made the comment about how they have an unauthorized access off of that road, is that, is that how I understood it?
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't part of the original plan when that shop was put in. Basically, as our road was being um asphalted, to my understanding, um the previous owner, you know, uh basically spoke directly with the contractor that was doing the work and requested that she put an access in there without discussing it with the rest of the road district.
Right. I I guess we're, when when you come up here and you tell me that, but it's been in there for five years, I'd have been like, that's something y'all should have addressed back then. Don't bring it in here as a reason to, to say, hey, we shouldn't put this in there because we didn't allow them to put it on there. Well, that's kind of your entity's realm of, somebody took access off of it, you should be addressing it with them, not bringing it here. Does that make sense?
Yes, yep. I appreciate that. Um however, I still have that concern that that's going to increase traffic on that. Even if it is signed, I would prefer to see them gate it or some other fashion so that you know, they could still maintain their personal access to it, but allowing potentially ten, twenty cabin goers up and down there is is my concern with that access.
Have you had any conversation with them?
With the current owners? No, this is the first I've heard about any of this. When we got the letter, there was no discussion with the road district about any of this.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, Marcus? Commissioner Adcock.
Well, um Cody, how long has this been commercial in the red?
Uh I believe since the nineties. Some, I don't have a specific date, but I know that they've been operating since at least the nineties, mid nineties for wedding venue, so it's highway service. So the the cabins, um I I know that there's concerns with the cabins and I understand those concerns, um but the cabins are used by right. So they don't need a P U D to be able to put those cabins in there and and use it. They could just come in for a building permit. Um and one and one thing that I will mention that I mentioned at the planning commission meeting, um you know, now that we know that that access off Piney Road isn't, isn't approved, if the applicants were to come in with building permits for their cabins, one, storm waters looked at for for runoff, um but two, if they're kind of, if they're saying that they're using that for access, we'll make them go to the road district and get an approach permit and the road district can uh I think the road district could say no or at that time figure something out with with that approach.
Oh, I I appreciate that, but I also know um across the street has been commercial a long time, even when I was a kid, that's a long time. So um you're also moving into an area that was zoned commercial before you decided to to live by it. They were there first, kind of. But I believe the solution is, is the signage, like Commissioner Lacroix said, the planning commission looked at that. They looked at the hours, which I believe is more than fair at this time, from the eight to eight, and then they're gonna move the the structure, not as much as a tent. So to me, they look like they're trying to find a solution with the neighborhood and that the planning department also, when you, Cody said they're doing their building permit, they're gonna address that traffic you talked about, sir. And they also are gonna talk about that drainage, so um to me, it's meeting a lot of those those concerns you have, which I appreciate you coming up here to me. Um number one, to learn kind of what's happening and number two, that uh your planning department and your commissioners, your planning commissioners as well, have been listening to your concerns, so um hopefully uh this meets a lot of what you're talking about, Marcus.
I think it does, and I appreciate you guys listening to my concerns. Um and I would appreciate, you know, the uh meeting with the the owners of it and having that neighborhood discussion and, you know, hearing the concerns direct, so um yeah, I think that's, well, my only other concern was the the property line shown on the boundary. I'm sure you guys are all aware how the the lines are skewed in the the Pennington, so, or in in Lawrence County all over, so um they'd have a real hard time fitting those cabins up between that road and the forest service, which is why I think they're gonna have to do a significant amount of grading to get those in, but that's been stated, so appreciate your time.
Thank you, Marcus, and and come back again too, because they are gonna be coming up again on the cabins or you can call the planning department and see on that drainage and some of those things that might be affecting your road and some other areas in there, because that's, to me, that's a huge issue. Drainage is a huge issue, because you're flooding people out or you're you're destroying other people's property, so.
Drainage and fire, those are my, those are my biggest concerns, yeah.
I bet, being in the forest service, Marcus, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Lacroix.
Just one final comment. Marcus, I mean, you you said a lot of times during these processes, you get a letter and so you come here, but I think I just heard you communicating with the applicant would probably solve a lot of the problems. I mean, they may be willing to work with the gate or whatnot, but.
I think a lot of problems can be solved that way, but then you guys don't have the complaints in your records and things like that, because that's how we deal with things in the past, is working through our neighborhood and then like, well, if you've been complaining about it, you guys don't know about it, so we like to try and solve things amongst ourselves, you know, first and foremost, before taking it up the the chain and so that's probably why you don't have those complaints in your hands.
Good point, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Chair.
Uh Commissioner Roskinak.
I just want to point out that uh the previous owner did run a really tight ship and that uh that wedding venue was run very diligently. But the new owners bought the property July the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, so we don't really have a history. And to me, a business is only as good as the owners of the business. I just want to keep that in mind going forward.
So a question for you, Commissioner Roskinak, you uh you you indicated you would like to see that uh one uh uh point uh changed to the eight P M, but did you hear the uh the following conversation where part of it is uh till twelve o'clock and the other part is uh ten o'clock?
Well, the part that I heard, the music's gotta stop at eight o'clock, outside music. But then from eight o'clock P M to midnight, there's no mention of how much noise you can have, it just, it it's just kind of a no man's land. Uh the only mention is that midnight, the noise has got to stop and follow the definition of quiet hours, so my concern is if even if you don't have the music, it's a wedding venue, people get happy, they like to have fun and I don't think they should do it at expense to the neighbors. I would like to see that changed to ten P M or eleven P M like maybe that David mentioned, but I think midnight's just a little too late, that's just uh that uh especially going into a new owner that you're not get, or there's, they're not gonna live on site, that uh that kind of worries me when they don't live on site. And I don't think the neighbors should have to be the police, uh the police system, should be placed by the owners that should live on site, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair. So it's condition number eight that you're questioning, I I believe, then.
Uh correct, uh uh I'd go for eleven, I and I think the the neighbors would too, and I don't even think the owners would probably have a problem with that, just to, just to show some good faith with the neighbors.
So what you would propose is eight would read uh shall be between eight A M and twelve or eleven A M only and that quiet hours be from eleven, I'm sorry, eleven P M to eight A M.
Correct. Just the one more hour.
Okay, does anybody else support that?
Mr. Chair.
I don't, I don't hear the commission responding positively on that. Ron, I think their commission is uh more in tune to leaving it as it is written. Commissioner Lacroix.
Yes, um this is a conditional use permit, so it's gonna be reviewed in a year.
Yep.
Correct. So I, that's where I'm at with this. I think there's some good discussion and I think as as Mr. Drews and had commented that 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 when they set through this, this is for a multi-year plan of what could be and so forth. And so I think with the review in one year, I think that would give us to an idea to see if there is problems. But I think there is some good logic to what is written down with the conditions and I would, I'm supporting the recommendations.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So the neighbors understand a conditional use permit means in that if they complaint based, that if there is the issues and these new owners do not run it as respectful as the last ones, it's a good thing to contact your planning department or your commissioner about those issues and then that can be changed on those quiet hours or the things that they've not complied with. So at least um at this point, I'm with um the commission, some of the commissioners that wanna just leave it as is, just to see if these people are as respectful as the last owners and it is a actually a good solution for both sides with the eight o'clock being for the music and then twelve o'clock for the rest, so. Um I'm always into trying to give a business a chance and then when that business is not respectful for the, to the people around there, then um we start um stipulating stuff a lot more on them. And then they kind of get the point that they have to comply and be respectful, so um I'm into just leaving it as is at this time.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
I'd move to approve planned unit development overlay P U twenty two dash sixteen with sixteen conditions.
Got a motion and a second. Uh any public, further public comment? Back to, yes. You need to come forward and identify yourself, please.
My name's Dan Owens and uh I live across the highway, um quite a ways away, actually. But, and I don't know how it will be in the future, I only know how it's been in the past. And they have been good about shutting the music off when they said they were going to. But I can hear it plain as day, I mean, I can hear at eleven o'clock at night, I can hear the DJ talking, I can hear all the music, I can hear the people. And and it's probably a lot because of the topography of the area and that they're up high, I'm up high, there's nothing between us to deflect the music and it carries a long ways. And so, you know, I'm in favor of the eight o'clock, that's that's great. I'm not against the development or anything, I'm just I just have concerns with the noise um as it has been and and I was just worried about the future. So, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I'm Trudy Hyer. I'm president on the Big Piney Road District and and on, is it Ron, on his point?
Commissioner Roskinak, yes.
Yep. His point, the the, I think the biggest concern, um like he said, Joanne was very, very, very conscious of how people behaved at those weddings. I think, I think what you're gonna run into, and I don't, you know, I hope it doesn't happen, but to the point of the residents having to police those cabins after hours, I think is probably, um we will have a board meeting in May and and hopefully Jen and Andy come and we can address these concerns, but I think the the fact that there will be nobody living on the property and those cabins being rented out with nobody on the property who enforced the rules, I think that's probably, I live right there. I live, they're gonna be in my backyard because it it it's different than what that, like Marcus said, they're they're kind of skewed. Um and I, you know, I'm concerned about policing the cabins, to be honest with you. Because it's, they get pretty rowdy, those weddings get pretty rowdy and she, man, she shuts them down, she's she was really good about that and, you know, anybody, you know, plowing through the you know, the Big Piney Road district, there's, there's a lot more kids in our um development now. Um that's a concern with people, you know, they do bomb around up on that Big Piney Road, but we try to slow them down if we can. But that, I guess, I just hope that when they come for approval on those cabins, that you know, a lot of other stuff, the, you know, the topography, the drainage, the loss of trees is all considered.
Well, Jen, appreciate you coming forward. Um I would hope that you uh extend a hand to Andy and Jen to attend your meeting. And so that you can have that discussion at that level.
Yeah.
And certainly it's gonna be reviewed in a year, uh so if there are complaints uh that come to us, uh those will be considered at that time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Yes, I'll go ahead and support it. Uh I just uh want the neighbors to realize that if they're if they're gonna be complaints, they they got one year to voice those complaints if there's gonna be issues. But uh you know, if it's gonna be reviewed in one year on a complaint basis, I'll uh I'll support it, uh just uh be consistent with the commission.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. Item G.
Cody Sanger, Planner. Item G is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-20. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from Agriculture District to Ranchette District. The applicant landowner is Brian Schroeder. The applicant has requested for this to be denied without prejudice, similar to item A. He's looking for solutions for a second means of ingress and egress, and he just wants some time for that. So, staff's going to recommend denial without prejudice with the applicant's concurrence. And the Planning Commission had recommended denial on this request.
So, Chairman.
One question, Commissioner Haggard first. So, the suggested motion that I have here is to acknowledge the request to withdraw.
Yeah. So, if he can withdraw it, if he withdraws it, though, then he'd have to apply for, under a whole new application again. If you deny without prejudice and he gets this taken care of within a year, finds a second means of ingress and egress, he can come back under that same application and apply for it. And all he'd have to do is pay advertising fees.
Within a year.
Within a year, yes.
Okay. So, I guess I'd like to hear the applicant say that, since the information that we have is to request withdrawal of both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the rezone.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
There was an email earlier that we had on the, it was on the variance.
Variance.
That was the same property. And he, the email had some of the conversation about, would you like this one to also be denied without prejudice? So, I assume there's been that conversation already from that email traffic, that he is expecting this to be denied without prejudice.
That's amazing.
Yep. Yeah, because the email that was sent, it says withdraw without prejudice. So, it's withdraw, you either withdraw or you deny without prejudice. If you deny without prejudice, if he were to find, if he were to get an easement to build a road within the next month, he could come in on the same application. He would just have to pay advertising fees. If he withdraws it, he has to pay for a whole new application in the future. So, it actually benefits him a little bit.
Commissioner Haggard.
So, Chairman, can we put G and H together to deny without prejudice since they're together?
I think we probably need separate motions on them.
Okay.
Move to deny without prejudice, item G.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to deny without prejudice. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
Move to deny item H without prejudice.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to deny without prejudice, item H. Any public comment?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Could Cody read that in for those who are on YouTube?
I'm sorry.
Could you read in what the item is, so those people that watch on YouTube can know what we're voting on?
So, the motion is to acknowledge the request to withdraw rezone?
Yeah, but it's for public...
Or deny, I'm sorry.
For public hearing rezone RZ 22-27 by Brian Schroeder and Davis Engineering.
I guess that's what I was...
Okay, okay.
Fair enough, sorry.
And to deny without prejudice. Okay? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Fennison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item I is marijuana business license 22-01 to allow for a marijuana business license. The applicant is M&amp;M Medical Solutions. Their agent is Timothy McMahon, and the property owner is Patrick Hall. Location of the property is approximately two and a half miles south of the intersection of Katron Boulevard and Highway 79. It is 40 acres, currently zoned heavy industrial district, vacant of any structures or utilities, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Access is off Highway 79. So, when reviewing marijuana business licenses, we do consult the Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 328. Those are on the screen. As you can see, they do meet all of those criteria. A little property history, on January 15th of 2019, the Board of Commissioners approved rezone 18-09 to heavy industrial. On November 10th of 2021, the Planning Department approved the applicant's pre-screening application in accordance with Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 329. On January 24th of this year, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 21-73 with conditions. And on October 12th of this year, the Planning Department reviewed the applicant's development plan and provided approval and comments in accordance with section 327. Request was sent out for an interdepartmental review. Rapid City Public Works responded stating that they were basically going to turn over jurisdiction of any septic requirements to the county. And with that, the applicant meets all the requirements for a marijuana business license, and staff recommends approval with three conditions.
Questions? Jason.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
Not really questions, but we had went to Adams County and vetted a lot of this and learned a lot about the marijuana process, whether it be cultivation, dispensaries, or manufacturing. And I think the planning staff did an amazing job with the rules and regulations which they put forth. And in this case, I'm in support of this moving forward because they followed all the rules and regulations. They still have to go through the state in order to get their license. So, this is just the first process in which they have to go through in order to follow the regulations to move in the direction of getting this done. So, I don't have any issues with this at this time.
Any questions, Jason?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Could you do, Jason, could you just give us a little bit of timeline? Deb just mentioned a few of these. But, so, one of the conditions is going to be for approval of the marijuana business license valid for one year. Then it goes up for review for the county, correct?
Right. So, that gives them enough time to go to the state to get their state license and then come back and begin construction of the facility.
Once he starts the constructions. And then, after one year, the license has not been obtained by the state and received final approval of the county license, the conditional approval will end. So, they have to get the state.
Right. So, if they don't get it by, within the one-year timeframe, then this conditionally ends.
Okay. And also, condition number three is the business license will be reviewed in one year on a complaint basis or directed by Pennington County Planning Commission Board of Commissioners to verify the conditions. One of the reasons why I bring this up, not only for the public's review, but also for the applicant's and the commission's review, is that, you know, with manufacturing delays for equipment and so forth, this building could be delayed. And you may, it may come forward at later date for an extension or something like that because manufacturing of some of the equipment transformers, electrical boxes, all that is, has had great delays. Maybe they'll catch up more next year, but I just know that for a fact. So, I just want to let every, not only commissioners know, but also we understand that from the applicants. So...
Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I'll move to approve marijuana business license ML 22-01 with three conditions.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second. Public comment? Back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Just want to bring it to the attention of the commission that relative to item 20B, which we continued to the January 3rd meeting, thinking that it needed a change from a variance, that I understand that the discussion now has been that the variance is the appropriate way to go on it?
That is correct. They did send me some photos of it, and we did look at it. So, it would, and they cannot attend the January 3rd meeting. So, it is their wish to have it reconsidered and considered by this board. With the additional information, we do have photos of it. So, the commission can see.
So, can I get a motion to reconsider item 20B?
First, you have to go into Board of Adjustment.
Move to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, I need a motion to reconsider item 20B.
So, move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Just to give you an overview, this is actually what the structure will look like. These were photos that were provided by the applicant here recently. So, this is the exterior of the structure. Let's see.
Is this what it will look like, or is this it on the...
This is what it will look like. They...
So, these are the plans that we've picked out. And this, I wanted to, one of the planning commission alluded to, you could sleep in a shed. This is not the case. This is not a shed. This is going to be a nice structure. So, it's not just a shed out there that I'm sleeping in.
Just without electricity and without water?
No electricity, no water, no toilet. It shows a kitchen in the plan, but obviously I can't do that. I don't have water or power, sewer.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that staff would still consider it a variance request because it meets a definition. So, in speaking with the applicant, so we didn't see any reason to make them come back to another meeting on the 3rd. In speaking with them, they're not available on the 3rd. So, that was the request from the reconsideration. And depending upon what the Board of Adjustment decides, we'll decide what we work with them moving forward.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you for the photos. I mean, the reflection of a shed made me think of the one I've got in my backyard and...
Right.
But it didn't, it doesn't really change some of the discussion. I mean, from conditional use to a variance, it does because staff sees it one way. But in all reality, with no electricity, no running water, you know, and no separate kitchen and so forth, that makes a big difference as far as what I think. But, because I think we're going to see quite a bit of smaller units than what we've had discussions for in the past. You know, things are changing and things are moving. And quite frankly, that's a, that's a pretty nice unit, myself. I mean, I, and so I think we're going to see some of this coming forward as a commission. And so, you're probably the groundbreaking because we've denied some other stuff in the past. So, thanks for at least sitting back and getting this resolved today.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Brittany or Megan or both of y'all, I'm going to ask y'all some questions here, if you don't mind. So, get ready for some doozies. Well, no, it might be you, Megan, but we'll start with Brittany and just giving you heads up to be prepped for this. Fair enough. Well, you might come up and ask some questions. So, I guess what I'm concerned with, if we, and I'm just saying, I'm just making an assumption, let's just say we decide to approve the variance and allow this to go in, what would prevent them in the, in the future to run water, run power, put a septic out there later? I'm just, I'm just, I'm thinking worst-case scenario, and then all of a sudden, now we have a habitable structure with everything that makes it a home, but it's still outside of our 14 by 20 requirements for living quarters. Do you get where I'm going with this?
Yeah, it really wouldn't make a difference to our office because if they improve it to, the variance is just for the footprint of the structure. There's still the use of the structure, whether they use it like full-time, part-time, the zoning district that it's in allows either. It's still a dwelling, in our opinion. So, whether they use it full-time or part-time, it's just the footprint that doesn't meet our requirements. So, if they do all of those things and they upgrade it, then...
And we would say you can, you can do that as long as you upgrade it to a 20 by 20 at a minimum.
No, they would, if they get the variance, they could keep it the way that it is and add water to it and add a septic to it. It wouldn't change how we look at the use because right now, we're looking at it as living quarters.
Gotcha. Does that set a precedence in the future for people coming in and asking for variances for less than a 20 by 20? If that was to happen. I'm not saying you're going to do that. I have to think through those things.
I got it.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, if you, if you look at where this is at, I have to go, the burden of going through federal land to get power. And I've tried since 19, whenever I bought this, it's nearly impossible. So, the chances that you can get power there and then you need power for a well are very small. It would be cost prohibitive unless you're building a several million dollar house and you can afford it. But I sure as...
As you or if you win the lottery?
I even wouldn't, it's not worth it.
So, just a question. So, it says to allow a residential structure that does not meet the minimum dimensions. So, it does not meet the minimum dimension. So, we are agreeing today that he can build a 14 by 20. We're not agreeing that he has about, that he can't have power about the road or anything else at this time?
Correct. It's just a variance to the stick belt requirements that it doesn't meet the 20 by 20.
Okay, I got it.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy. Oh, Commissioner Roskinak, I'm sorry.
I was just going to go ahead and make the motion to approve variance VA 22-26 with one condition. And my reasoning is simply because you don't have electricity. And I think that really limits the overall utility of that building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to grant the variance?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
Is there going to be with that one condition that's been recommended by the board, by the staff, that the applicant obtain an approved road construction in a section line right away and waiver to ordinance 14 standards for the existing access road? Because I did not hear that in the, in the motion.
Said one, that's added on that condition.
That would be, that would be my motion, Travis.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure that...
Correct. Good, good.
Okay. So, have you heard the motion and the second? Any further discussion? Favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
You have been approved.
Yeah, he did say this.
So, now we're back to...
Need to adjourn as Board of Adjustment?
Item 21.
Will you come out of a Board of Adjustment?
Second.
Need that motion, motion and a second to come out of a Board of Adjustment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Wow, Holly, you're chasing the whole crowd out.
What'd you do, Holly?
I know.
You came up, they leave.
I cleared the room for you. Commissioners, item A is a request to update our policy and procedure in regards to the public comment period in our speaker request forms. It was discovered that I had an incorrect statement on the back of our speaker request forms that basically said all meetings required a period for public comment, and that is not in line with what state statute says. So, this is a request to update both, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, that's getting removed, correct?
It will no longer say all meetings. It will say regularly scheduled meetings. Even though Pennington County has a rich, you know, history and tradition of seeking public comment.
Yeah.
We want to be, you know, in line with what the state statute specifically says.
And we can always say, we're willing to still accept all those comments if we want to. Yep, absolutely.
Motion.
So, move to approve, let's see, move to approve the updated Pennington County policy and procedures for public comment periods and the speaker request form.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Policy and procedure.
Item B, I would like to respectfully request that the board postpone this indefinitely, and I need to do some additional work with the state's attorney's office before we bring this back.
So, moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to continue indefinitely. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
Item C is the resolution to, for a commitment to host the 2025 Western Interstate Region Conference. This is one of the requirements as we are moving forward in that process. And I will certainly stand for any questions, but looking to approve that resolution today.
Well, I think this is a good invitation. And this comes through Commissioner LaCroy. I think he's the one that extended the invite or discussed the invite at their, at their meeting. So, this would be in 2025. There is some costs associated with it. But I think that most, if not all, that cost will be taken care of through other organizations that have an interest. taken care of through other organizations that have an interest in seeing this kind of number of people come to the Black Hills area.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you for the description on that because that's absolutely right. This is a step forward. The Western Interstate Region, they've reached out to our Visitors Convention Center and they had their discussions and received some of their stuff that they needed to move that forward. Part of the, just for considerations so far, you know, we need to approve this motion. Then it goes to the state one and they need to give support as well. As Mr. Drew has stated, there is some costs that they expect that they bring that out and be forward. But quite frankly, I believe we can get sponsorships to cover those costs. And I really appreciate Holly's work on this. She's done outreach and followed up on the communications and kept up on it. So not everything's just set in stone. This is just another part of the process moving forward. And once, once we know for sure, because they'll probably do a site visit and so forth, once that comes forward, then we have time to do the planning, which I think we'd have over a year's worth of time for that.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
I'm not against having the conference. I think we've done it through National League of Cities with Malcolm before. But I'd like to know the financial and other responsibilities, at least somewhat of a ballpark of what the county would be committing and, and staff that we could be committed to this. Because it says other responsibilities of hosting. Be kind of nice what that all comes together as. And maybe Holly, you have that information already.
Yeah, it's, it's included in your packet. Commissioner Haggard, basically what, what it would be is the county would have two meals that they would be responsible for providing. They ask for heavy orders for a certain number of people. It would also be staff helping with the, like the registration desk, kind of being like the face of Pennington County, being able to answer questions about our communities. It would also include setting up mobile workshops for, you know, participants to come and network and see what we do. So maybe possibly the camp campus, Pivot Point. Dollar wise, unfortunately, I'm not able to throw that out there for you for a specific. But the two big ones would be the, the meals for the board of directors and other dignitaries that are in attendance. And then staff time to host the registration desk and be volunteers.
And you're thinking your staff, you and your two staff are going to do this?
No, it's going to have to be a broader, like department head level, other staff. It's, no, the three of us cannot handle that. It would need to be several, several others.
Have you talked about this with others, department heads about this conference?
I did let the department heads know that this was a possibility and they, they seemed excited about it to absolutely spread the word of the great things that we're able to do and the collaborations that we've been successful with. So I did share with them that we were moving forward in this process and they may be asked to help in the future.
So in our determination, we're thinking fifty or I think a hundred thousand or I think a ten thousand or any kind of ballpark of what this would cost?
Twenty-four is what I.
Yeah, I'm going to say twenty-five. If I had to throw a number out there, I, I'm going to say twenty-five. But we do have a, a preliminary commitment from Visit Rapid City for five thousand dollars to go towards that. The State Association has also expressed interest. They will be discussing it this week, I believe, and may be able to contribute or donate to that as well. So.
So how many people usually attend these? Do you know?
This one I believe is between four and five hundred.
Okay, that makes sense. For twenty-five thousand, what that would do economically, that's no brainer.
It's a big deal.
Thank you, Miss Holly, for all the information.
Yeah.
And I think it doesn't necessarily have to be all county employees either that provide some of those services like registration and so forth. There's other organizations that may have an interest of assisting with that, such as Visit Rapid City and so forth.
Yes, yes, you're correct, sir. And I'm sorry, I failed to mention that, that one of the requirements in here is that you host the desk at the conferences prior to, to promote the upcoming attendance. And Visit Rapid City said they absolutely will go and do that on our behalf. So that would not be a requirement of ours.
But we could volunteer if we wanted.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Got your name down.
Financial and other responsibilities helping the twenty twenty-five Western Interstate Region Conference.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Items from the chair, commission members. So let's do committee reports and other items at the same time. Commissioner Lassiter.
Committee report. Snowed in for committee Hill Center report. Rapid City Public Library Meeting. I actually had a conflicting schedule with that one, with my work, with, with a client, so I was unable to make that one. So I actually was a no-show to, to my committees this, this last couple of weeks. But from the other areas, I did make it to the Sadiya Water Meeting at Elevate, their third meeting that I've been a part of. At the Elevate Building, they're walking away with the long-term, they're, so the, the meeting was fairly productive. There, there was a lot of discussion about some of the very specifics of the water line to, and the infrastructure work from Rapid City into Box Elder to the base and then how it's going to be set up. They're going back and working on some finals and to see if the Air Force will buy off on the proposal. Because the Air Force is a Department of Defense, they have to approve the contracts. So the base is going back with the way it was recommended to be structured to see if the Air Force will do that, the DOD will do that. And if they are willing to do that, then they'll come back and say DOD is willing to do the infrastructure with this. And here's how they'll do the water lines to the impacted individuals to include a projection of individuals being added later on because there's an expectation EPA is going to release a new number for that PFOS level and it's going to be lower than it currently is, which will put more people on the water system. So working through some of those very specifics, it's going to be interesting. But they're going to be putting out in the, the base newsletter on the PFOS, PFOA, the collaboration between Rapid City, Sadiya and Box Elder on this project. And they hope that it moves forward so that we have something to talk about in more detail for the community meeting in March. So that's the big thing from, from that meeting. Outside of that, let's see, do, do, yeah. Oh, and I've got New York Wood Fire Meeting tonight, Fire Department Meeting tonight. Outside of that, nothing much.
Christmas party.
Christmas party.
Fairgrounds.
Huh?
Fairgrounds.
Oh, yeah, we did go to the Christmas party, the fairground. Yeah, that's right, because that was like the starting of the storm. I had to drive slow going home. That was almost like a, a crazy night too because it was slick. Yeah, we had a Christmas party at the fairgrounds. It was nice, good updates from, from the fairgrounds, the building. And I don't know how much you guys got to tour or if y'all toured it beforehand, but that building and the connection was very, very nice. I, I definitely let them know that it was, that was nice and ready to see their next project that they're good for. They talked about their next projects that they're moving forward with as well. So I'll be excited to see how those come and move and progress. So it was a great night, even though I stayed short because of the weather.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, for committees, you guys, we did the planning commission, so there's nothing really to report there. It was a good commission meeting they had, our planning commission meeting. They had all, everybody there and there were some great questions and discussions during the meetings. And, and they gave their recommendations. Air Quality Board, nothing unusual there to report. They did have one complaint from smoke from fireplace type. And from my understanding, they, they've gotten this complaint quite often and they finally got one where it was out of compliance. So they, they did write an issue on that. But otherwise, there's not really anything to report from that. Our building committee, we did a Zoom because that was Tuesday when, during the storm. So there was only about four of us. I think it was Ron, Kevin and Jay and myself and maybe one other. And we'll have some discussions on some of that later on in executive session. But that was just pretty much updates and reports. You know, we talked about the tunnels in the courthouse, the condition that they're in and then some maybe the bidding process and so forth. So you, you guys will get those in the minutes. So Community Health got canceled at the last minute, so that was not supposed to be on Thursday. All from committee reports, we did, I did attend the hand games with the team of Carol and Brian Mueller, myself and.
Alex.
Alex. Alex. We lost. But if we were going to lose, we lost to a team that was just outstanding. I mean, I learned, we all learned a lot. That game, first game went on for an hour. So these were some professionals. But it was very entertaining and I think we all learned a lot. The numbers were kind of down at the LNI. Just from me walking around and looking, that was just because we were in the middle of a storm. But one of the things that they were doing there was YouTube-ing the games to the reservation so people could watch them, they could make it in. But the hand games were probably down thirty percent just because of the weather, but they did make it out. And it, it was a good time. So the, the prize that we end up winning for eleventh place, it was a, it was a little two-peat. I gave it to Brian for his new office. So I think he needed some decorations. So. But otherwise, it, it was a good, good time in LNI. The great support down there and a lot of kids running around with, the Human Relations Commission did put on the Big Chrome Film, Film Festival in two days. And so they had attendance in that. But otherwise, besides that, that's all I've got to report.
Okay. So a couple of things that I have. First of all, as required, Pennington County has received a letter from Blue Peak with our internet and TV indicating that they have to give us notice that they are raising their rates as of February, as of February twenty twenty-three. And rates on basically, most of their services is being increased as of that point in time. The MPO meeting of Commissioner Ross Connect and I attended that. Commissioner, or Mayor Larson from Box Elder was re-elected chairman of that. Commissioner Ross Connect was re-elected vice chairman of that group. I don't think we had any new projects added at that time. Commissioner Ross Connect can report on this also. But we did get an update on some of the, some of the projects, one being the, the planning for the fourteen sixteen Radar Hill Road. As with almost everything that's happened in recent time, the cost of that, that is going up by about a third. And so it's going to continue to move forward, but it's just going to be a, a cost increase on it. And if there's specific things that Commissioner Ross Connect would like to speak about on that, he may do so. And then Central States Fair, the only thing that we had for business at that was the budget. And we moved that forward to the, to the January meeting. Yesterday, I also met with the Howie Group, Gordon Howie, his brother Gary, Kelly, DOT was there. Box Elder, Mayor Larson was there. This is talking about their proposed development of about fourteen hundred acres in the Box Elder area. One of the things they need in order to make that work for them is a railroad crossing at Westport. And so they will be, the Howie Group will be working with the railroad now to try to move forward with developing plans and engineering plans for that crossing. I think that's all I have. Commissioner Ross Connect. You're on, you're muted, Ron.
I was requested to mute. I'll start off with the Pennington County Council of Beijing. The last meeting, we approved two grants. One would be ten thousand. That would be earmarked for the Senior Citizen Center in Keystone. The, the building has a metal roof and there's severe damage to that. The bids were somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand and we approved ten thousand for roof repairs on that building. And then we approved five thousand forty-nine for Health and Human Services. A breakdown of that would be one hundred and eighty-two dollar ride tickets at twenty-seven each and ten rapid ride tickets for thirteen fifty each. The building committee, one of the things that we discussed was the, the acquisition of the Great Western Bank Building and that twenty-eight thousand square foot lot that lays adjacent to the Lamplighter Site. And I think there was a, a letter sent to them roughly six months ago. And it's got some age on it. So I asked Kevin if he'd reached back out to them to see if they have any interest in selling it all. Because if they don't, that's an integral part of some of the other ideas that is on the drawing board. And if that property's not available, then there's no sense in putting it in our future meetings. And if the building's not available, I think we're still interested in if we could buy the lot separately. That would, it'd go good with the Lamplighter light. Each one of those lots are about twenty-eight thousand square feet. And there's a sixteen-foot big headed alley separating them. And then we discussed the nine hundred concourse building. That'll, the design work, interior layout, design work, they're still going to rely on the consulting firm that we hired BKV to participate in that interior design. And hopefully that'll, two thousand twenty-three, you'll see the repurposing of the interior and then a move in sometime in the first part of two thousand twenty-four. The MPO, I'll just give you a, a breakdown. We, we approved the, the agreement between the city of Rapid City and South Quarter Department of Transportation for accomplishing, accomplishing the Rapid City Transit Transportation Planning Process in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand five, five hundred dollars. Then we also approved the two thousand twenty-three, the two thousand twenty-six Transportation Improvement Program Amendment twenty-three dash zero zero three. And then we approved two thousand twenty-three Transportation Products and D dates. And we approved the two thousand twenty-two Annual Listing of Obligated Projects. Lastly, we approved the annual listing of obligated projects for the United Planning Work Program Amendment twenty-two dash oh two. And that's it for me.
Commissioner Haggard.
Thank you. The win and passport, I didn't end up making compensations. Committee got rescheduled. So those two committees were, I didn't get any information. I rescheduled again for tomorrow, but it didn't work out. So we rescheduled again for next week for compensation. So really good group. Couple of things, the Central States Fair Christmas Party, John and Ron put on a wonderful meal for everybody and games. That I was in the group that I think we got second or third from last, but it was Christmas trivia, quite fun. One person I saw that was pretty awesome is Lindell Peterson. Wow, does he look amazing. He looks refreshed and good to go. And I told him I wish that I'm in that good a shape as well, like he is, without sounding rude at his age, because it's pretty amazing. He's just as tough as it gets. So he was a really good commissioner and a good person. We also, I met with, with full disclosure, the Pennington County Housing CEO, Brian Akbak and our project manager, who is, I can never think of his name. I can never think of his name. Anyway, and Vice Chair Jermaine Littlebear, and we talked about some of the RAD conversion and the difference between the two companies, and that our committee tomorrow will decide which company, um, that they will put forward, but he would just wanted to share information and, um, what they had learned, and that they had met with some of the, um, people from the office with, uh, our project manager and stuff, so. Um, that was something to go through, and it's nice to see that our CEO is really on top of stuff. And then our Christmas party for Pennington County Housing is at three o'clock tomorrow, and then we'll have our regular meeting at four. I also would like to thank, uh, the, uh, Commission Office with Joan and Jerelyn and Pepper and Sandra for the Christmas party. That was amazing. Um, they asked if I'd give some prizes, and that was a no-brainer because that's for our employees. And I just loved doing, actually, I did candy bouquets to share, which I've never done. I have more burned fingers than I ever have.
I will say I stopped doing, and those were beautiful.
Well, it's funny because I think I burned my fingers. I am not a person that sits and does bouquets kind of things, but it was pretty amazing. It was fun to do, and, um, anything for, uh, accounting, uh, for prizes that, um, thought I was gonna do hair stuff, and I was like, you guys are gonna do these candy bouquets, so, um, but it's not about me. It's about our, our people that did that party, and it was pretty amazing. So thank you, Pepper, and, um, Joan, and Jerelyn, and Sandra, who all put that on, cause they decorated when it came in. It was blue. I missed the party because I had to work from nine thirty to three that day. But I gotta see them setting up the decorations and all the stuff they did. It's not something that's overnight. This has to be planned a long time, so. It was amazing. I heard some really good things about the party, and it's good camaraderie for our team here at Pennington County. Um, the other, um, thing was, when I was at, uh, Brian's office at the Pennington County Housing Authority, there might be something that we could look at for next year, or even maybe for Easter, and I talked to the HR about that, is decorating doors. So we can have a contest throughout Pennington County. They decorated the doors at Pennington, Pennington County Housing Office, and they had a contest that gave them a gift card. So then you could have it at the Sheriff's Office, you could have it at the different offices in Pennington County, and they could take pictures of their doors and see who picked the best door. So it'd be something that could go, you know, around the whole Pennington County, just something food for thought. I had left that message for Holly, but I thought that was pretty cool. But thank you again for everybody that, um, put their time in on that Christmas party because it was pretty awesome. And Ms. Holly, um, did I miss you? I thought it was just your two stand. So Joan's going to you, so, Ms. Holly, thank you for everything you've done, so.
Okay. Need a motion to approve vouchers, the amount of three million one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion to go into executive session? Got a motion and a second to go into executive session for personnel issue and contractual pending litigation. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I need a motion to come back in regular session.
So moved. Moved to come back into regular session.
Got a motion and a second. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move to approve back pay in the amount of three eighty-eight for Natalie Gronlund for the time period of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to be paid in the December twenty-third, twenty-two paycheck.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion number two is to approve the back pay in the amount of two fifty-four thirty-nine for Emily Martinez for the time period of August seventh, twenty twenty-two to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to be paid in the December twenty-third, twenty twenty-two paycheck.
Thank you.
Um, motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion number three would be moved to approve the back pay in the amount of three sixty for Rachel Lindsay for the time period of October third, twenty twenty-two to November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two to be paid in the December twenty-third, twenty twenty-two paycheck.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Get a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. We're done.